Let's call this meeting to order. The, and first item of the business is going to closed session. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2, 37, 111. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of public or held real property for discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body. Our first item under that would be Mid-County. The next section would be discussion of consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, emotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, or employees of any public body. Commerce, Park Participation Committee, Community Action Incorporated, Economic Development Authority, Library Board, Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Planning District Commission, Roanoke Valley Area MPO, Social Services Board, Virginia First Regional Industrial Facility, and Workforce Investment Act, Local Youth Council. So, have a motion?
Yes, sir.
And a second? Would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Crewe?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cuff?
Aye.
Mr. Gayle?
Aye.
Mr. King? Chairwoman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairwoman?
We're in closed meeting. Aye. Need a motion to go out of closed meeting? The next order of business is our invocation, and we will observe a moment of silence to Have a motion? And a second? reflect on the business at hand, and right after that, we'll be led in the pledge by Would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Beattie?
Mr. Matters, our county administrator.
Aye.
Mr. Perfect?
Let us pledge, please.
Aye.
Mr. Cuff?
Aye.
Mr. Gayle?
Aye.
Mr. Crewe?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Aye.
Chairwoman?
Aye.
Certification of closed meeting. For us, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of
all.
the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is a delegation. And for us, section 2.2, 37, 111 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by Christiansburg Institute representatives, the Christiansburg Institute will update the the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Board on their activities and their FY14-15 fundraising requests. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia,
Good evening. My name is Bob Lerner.
hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters
I chair the Board of Christiansburg Institute Incorporated, and I represent the entire interests
lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters
of the Board and of the alumni of Christiansburg Institute. Gladys Soffolow, who is the executive director of Christiansburg Institute Incorporated,
were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting for our heard, discussed or considered by the Board.
is ill this evening and not able to be present, so I speak for her as well, in particular.
Motion?
Some is.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Would the clerk please call roll?
Ms. Beattie?
Aye.
We would like to thank you for your support of Christiansburg Institute.
Ms. Perfect?
For the time that I was there.
Mr. Cuff?
Aye.
Mr. Gayle?
Aye.
You have been two years running now in support of our work, and we deeply appreciate it.
Mr. Crewe?
We want you to know and take your support very seriously, that you expect to see good work coming from us, and I'll take a moment to give you an update on what we've been doing. I also want to let you know that you are in good company. The town of Christiansburg has been funding us at a rate of $10,000 a year for several years, and you've joined that. It's wonderful that you have. We also have gotten our organization much more securely grounded. The alumni and friends at this point are likely to be providing about $10,000, sometimes up to $15,000 per year, to the work that we're engaged in, which represents a strong statement from our immediate constituency. And I'm pleased to say that this year, we have also gained the support of the Appalachian Community Fund, which is based in Knoxville. We have heard from them, and heard that they are recommending us for funding. They were rebranding the organization, and they're recommending us for funding to their source. And I have had it directed from their executive director that our program is exactly what they want to do, so she thinks that that's going to be just fine. So, about, well, exactly four years ago, in July, Elaine Carter, who had been the energy and focus and leader of this effort, retired. And in the four years since her retirement, we have had to do some considerable work to regain balance within our own organization, to build a good relationship between Christiansburg Institute Incorporated, whose mission is to restore and utilize the facilities of Christiansburg Institute, the extra long building on the property on Scattergood Drive, and that four-acre tract part of the former campus. The partnership that we now can, I think, brag about is we have a very good working relationship with our alumni. The alumni are listening and responding, both by way of ideas and contribution of time and effort, and in terms of dollars. So that was a big step forward for our organization. As you all know, Christiansburg Institute stopped as a school in 1966, and that building that we're talking about has been vacant since then. The alumni organization represents people who graduated from school as of 1966, so that our constituency is limited in that sense. There are no more alumni being created, and that population is aging. Relying on that particular constituency for volunteerism, as well as financial support, is essential, but is also not the only place we can be looking. And we have been working very hard to get our not-for-profit organization on solid footing in terms of, of its ability to do what it says to do it, and develop a sustainable plan. Shortly after, in the summer following Elaine's retirement, we did an extensive retreat with the Board and on that, and reclaim our ownership of the vision for the future. And we decided in that time that it would be best for us to not build it and they will come, as a promise, but rather, let's start doing something, and we will get to building when we are able to handle that. And that's been our plan and our action. So each year, we have been conducting a program of events. It started around the Cooking Around the World event, which is multicultural cuisine that we produce in October, and we've added to that a rainbow luncheon, calling together people from many different backgrounds to get together and celebrate the diversity of the River Valley. That's held in the spring, and we also have been developing an ongoing annual gospel concert. All of these elements take a certain amount of getting it together and doing it, and I'm very proud to say that we are now on record as having done those things on a regular basis, and we're going to grow them. Our plan for the future includes expanding our program along these lines. An example of that is that we've been in conversation and are working actively with Project Esteem, which is an after-school program in the junior high school, middle school here in Christiansburg. And it originated with a group of faculty from Bradford and Virginia Tech, and the program went well, and then it kind of foundered for a little bit, and it's now back. And I'm pleased to say that one of my own students, who graduated last year, is conducting the theater aspect of that project this year, and they're going great funds, and they're using Christiansburg Institute's history as the primary focus of their theater studies in Project Esteem. So we've added to our list of programs that evolve with Project Esteem. The support that we get from the town of Christiansburg is built around the, our intention, our plan, and our strategic plan to build on the Cooking Around the World from a three-hour event to a day-long event that would celebrate the multicultural life of working people in the area. And that, we would hope to be able to use our facilities there on Scattergood Drive as a locus for that, as we get that building prepared. But in lieu of that, as we wait, we've taken some time and worked with the town of Christiansburg to level that meadow so that it can be walked without fear of falling into go for hole. And we've been working together with the town to identify how town assets can be helpful in making events happen there. And by way of example, there's a crowd of people in our valley who hail originally from New Orleans, and they're interested in an event to celebrate New Orleans in the River Valley, and we are in conversation with them about possibly doing that at some point in the future on our facility. So, rather than simply saying, if we can get $2 million, we'll be okay, we're saying we will work with the resources we have today, work on them hard, work on them to show ourselves and to gain the strength of our own capacity, and to build toward the time when we can go into a serious fundraising campaign to raise $2 million or more to restore the building and make that into an asset for the Valley. That kind of capitalizes it. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them as I'm able, and I would also turn to my trusty friends out here, who might also be able to add to any questions you might have.
Questions, Board members.
I just have one. Were you, and you may have mentioned this, I didn't hear it, though, approached by one of the local soccer clubs back there?
Yes, we were. And we were all set to go with that. That seems like a good, at least interim, plan. And as I understand it, the soccer club decided that their annual process had fallen a little bit awry, and they couldn't, in good faith, move forward on a plan without the funding that they thought they needed to have.
Okay.
They're still interested in the field. We're still interested in talking with them, but it is waiting for the right financial for them.
Send them your way.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah?
If I'm not mistaken, this board sent a letter to, like, the neighboring counties, challenging them to contribute to the Alumni Association. Did you hear anything from, like, Floyd County, Pulaski County, or whatever?
Yes, but I have not. We have not heard, and we've reached out to see if there was something going in the other counties, Pulaski.
Yeah, see, I was, I attended Christiansburg Institute, and at the time that, before integration, they bused kids from Pulaski, they bused kids from Floyd, they bused kids from the city of Rapid. It seems like some of the citizens who graduated, alumni, and who live within those jurisdictions could go to those boards, to those councils, and put in a word for the Alumni Association for the simple reason, if you're a citizen of the community, maybe the Board will listen to you, or if you're a citizen of the town, maybe Pulaski Town Council. Even if you got $400 or $500 from them, it would be a help.
You're absolutely right, and we are on it. We have been expanding our communication with alumni. At this point, the Alumni Association has a regular meeting every month, except during the winter months, and there are people who come up to those meetings from Pulaski, and there is a stronger delegation at this point in Pulaski, and I think that we can take that action that you recommend.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lerner.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, and I look forward to hearing how your budget passes, with us included. Thank you.
Our next delegation is at Solarize Blacksburg. I think we have Carol Davis, the sustainability manager for the town of Blacksburg, and John Randolph, professor emeritus of Virginia Tech.
Hi, I'm Carol Davis. Thanks so much for having us. We have a fairly short presentation on this exciting initiative that we had going in the town of Blacksburg, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions during or at the conclusion of our presentation. So, Solarize Blacksburg, where did you come up with this idea? I don't know quite how long ago, but a number of years ago, some folks in Oregon came up with this idea to have a way for communities to go all in on solar at one time, and to make it easier for more families to do it, more affordable, reducing the complexity of it, and they came up with this solarized model. And we've launched our own model, based on the success that has been seen all over the country of various communities who have pursued this. And I am proud to say that Blacksburg is the first community in Virginia to pursue a solarized project. So in a nutshell, the way a solarized project works, first of all, makes it a lot more affordable and a lot easier, in part by having used group purchasing of solar equipment, but actually, realistically, by reducing the cost of customer acquisition for solar installers. John is a member of the solarized ownership team for Blacksburg. There are two other members. We've developed a community housing partner investment, local solar advocate who put solar on her own home a number of years ago, and wants to help other families do that as well. We're out there in the community giving presentations, neighborhood groups, the library, and just helping people understand what it would take realistically from financing and technical aspects. So reducing that complexity for folks seems to be really driving a lot of adoption. And we're also, as a part of this, which is a little bit unique in our program, is we're using this as an opportunity to also talk about energy, larger energy issues, energy efficiency, looking at the whole energy equation of people's homes. This is sort of a pictographic way of describing the process. Here at Number One, with our kickoff event, with March 5th, I believe, 4th or 5th, first week of March, we have set a goal for ourselves of getting about 50, 60 people to sign up at the end of that first month. I believe we had 70 folks by the end of today. There was a lot of excitement. About 100 people came up to that community kickoff event. We have an online interface of enabling people to sign up for an initial site assessment. We have a team of folks who are working remotely to do some satellite assessments. It shows a map, just a real easy Google view, are the trees obstructing, is the house facing the right direction? If things look okay from a satellite perspective, we're getting contacted then, we enable them to select one of two installers that we pre-screen. We put out an RFP, we ask them to submit proposals. Part of that RFP is that they actually came down somewhat on their, with their regular price in order to be a part of this process. We're linking homeowners up with financing options, if that's something they want to pursue, and then beyond that, if they sign a contract and move forward. We also have folks on our team who will help them with the interconnection issues that come up with a grid-type solar electric system. And then step eight, you have solar, and you're producing some of your own energy for your own house, possibly 100% depending. So this is just a little bit more detail of the steps I just went over. A critical thing, if you, and I'm assuming, at least I'm here tonight, I'm not sure why I was invited, but there is somebody in your community who's interested in this, and you, as Board members, wanted to know more. What really makes this work is getting a project team together of folks who know about solar, who are connected in the community, and can really do the legwork that we've done on our team. As I said, we issued an RFP, got some great proposals, one from outside of the NRD area, but we decided we really wanted to support the local businesses we have here, the folks who have been working to make solar work in our communities for decades. Develop the publicity materials, line up your financing options. One thing that's been important in our community is we've been, our team has been working to address some potential obstacles, HOA restrictions, who are in place in a lot of our communities. I'm pleased to report that the governor just signed a new law outlawing HOAs complacing unreasonable restrictions on solar. We're not 100% sure what that exactly means. None of us are lawyers. Where the line between reasonable and unreasonable is, but we're getting some good advice on that. And also some permitting issues. In the past, and still, I'm going to be working right through this, if you wanted to put solar on your home, you often needed a professional engineer to do a structural analysis of the house, costing anywhere from $500 to $700. We've been working with our building officials and a structural engineer to say, let's, how could we streamline this process? Under what conditions could you bypass that? What criteria would need to be met where you could say comfortably that an analysis did not need to be done and cut that particular rather large cost out of it? And we're making great forward progress on that. Have a great outreach and media campaign, do what we've been doing on workshops, neighborhood meetings, and get people moving through. And at this point, I don't know if we have a slide on it, but, before I go there, we've had close to 300 people sign up. This is blowing us out of the water. We really had no expectation that it was going to be this successful, but there's a huge unmet demand for solar in our communities, clearly based on these interests we've gotten. And with that, I'll turn it over to John, who's going to talk more on the particulars.
Okay, thanks, Carol. And I'm happy to be here. First time I've been in this room, which I shouldn't say, but it's true. With the interest, I think, here, is that those 300 that have signed up, there are probably 10% who are outside of our area for this, which is 24060. We defined it as the zip code of Blacksburg. And so there has been a lot of interest from Charlesville, Ellison area, from Reiner to Christiansburg. And so really feel like there is a real interest in this across the county. And one of our objectives is to get our feet on the ground here, is to think forward, to think ahead, and to think how we can, after our May 3rd deadline in this campaign, to kind of inch this out to, you know, Montgomery County campaign, plus City of Rapid, perhaps. But with a real interest here is that Blacksburg, as Carol alluded to, has gotten a lot of interest statewide. And now Richmond, Charlottesville, Roanoke, Woodville, Floyd are all planning to develop their own solarized programs to advance their efforts. And that is why we're interested, and actually Department of Energy has contacted us to help them figure out this kind of program development protocol that then can be transferred to other places. So it's been, it's, you know, kind of beyond our expectations of this. Just to give you a few details of, you know, what, how we are really marketing this program, is that with solar photovoltaic, producing electricity on individual buildings, and then metering that or running excess production back to the grid, makes this a very affordable way of producing your own, or portion of your own, electrical use. The install cost has been the biggest barrier to doing this, it's, like, you know, expensive. But trying to figure out how to make the economics work is a primary objective. What's been happening globally is that the price of solar photovoltaics has dropped precipitously. We have a slide to kind of show that. But the install cost is really one of the key indicators, and this slide shows that it's gone down a lot since 2011, down to about $4 a watt of installed capacity. So if you get a, well, a 2.5 kilowatt system would cost $10,000 basically at that rate. What we've been able to do with this campaign is to reduce the installers' costs through both purchasing and particularly, you know, this marketing that we're able to provide. People are calling them, they don't have to call out. In fact, they're a little overwhelmed at the moment. So this red part shows the reduction of cost, so we're down to $3.55 a watt, which is probably the lowest install cost in Virginia. The national average right now is $4.50 a watt for residential systems. And so we run the economics of this based on this base cost. There are two systems shown here, three kilowatts. I get too technical, but these are just the size of the system. A three-kilowatt system would be about 12 panels, and they're each about, you know, three by five feet, so about 15 square feet. So you can get an idea of kind of the size of this. And what's shown here is the, you know, base costs, our discounts that we're able to get. There's 30% federal tax credit that is available, brings the front-end cost down considerably. And we've often, we've offered some financing mechanisms to deal with this. A lot of the signups are likely to use home equity lines or their own savings for this, but we've been able to achieve some, even some local banks participated in financing that brings the cost down. Our goal here is so that the cost of these systems, with the loan payment each month, will be offset by almost the electricity bill savings, and this is based at our about 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and those rates continue to go up. The little yellow area here shows solar renewable energy credits, SREC, they're called. And we're able to get a bonus right now registering for these SRECs that are marketed in Pennsylvania, actually, with their approved system. And it's an added benefit that these systems can get at $45 per SREC, which is, you know, I don't want to get too technical, but this would actually make a net benefit very small, but basically zero cost, no money down, you pay your loan payment over a period of time, and that loan payment is offset by your revenues. So this is what makes this really attractive now for a lot of people. A lot of people want our solar for a number of reasons, but if it makes sense in terms of the economics, then we get more and more participation. To show some bullet points on, you know, what we're saying to people, we've got this three-month campaign. In other places, it's always been this set time period, because if you tell them they have three months to do this, they will come forward. If they say you've got three years to do this, they'll wait till the end. So we actually expect at the end of, in May, we're going to get a lot more. but we've been able to achieve some, even some local banks participated in financing that brings the cost down. Our goal here is so that the cost of these systems with the loan payment each month will be offset by almost the electricity bill savings. And this is based at our about 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and those rates continue to go up. The little yellow area here shows solar renewable energy credits, SREC they're called. And we're able to get a bonus right now registering for these SRECs that are marketed in Pennsylvania, actually, with their approved system. And it's an added benefit that these systems can get at $45 per SREC, which is, you know, I don't want to get too technical, but this would actually make a net benefit very small, but basically zero cost, no money down, you pay your loan payment over a period of time, and that loan payment is offset by your revenues. So this is what makes this really attractive now for a lot of people. A lot of people want solar for a number of reasons, but if it makes sense in terms of the economics, then we get more and more participation. To show some bullet points on, you know, what we're saying to people, we've got this three-month campaign. In other places, it's always been this set time period because if you tell them they have three months to do this, they will come forward. If they say you've got three years to do this, they'll wait till the end. So we actually expect at the end of, in May, we're going to get a lot more signups because it's nearing the end of it, to get them to move. But what we argue is it's a good time to do it now because electricity prices are going up. I guess AFCO just announced a new rate increase week before last. The tax credit expires in 2016. The SREC market is in pretty good shape right now for us to take advantage of that opportunity. And basically, it's an economic, good economic investment. I mean, if you were going to then write a check to this, basically the return on investment ends up to be about, you know, not huge, but like 5% or 6%, which is better to get from the bank right now. Now, the other point is that this decline in solar cost may be kind of leveling out. And this shows that this precipitous drop of solar pricing over the last few years, this is just from 2010, so you can see the huge drop associated with that, but it started to level out. I doubt that it's going to go much lower than this. This shows in the fourth quarter, like 73 cents, actually in April last week, the price is 68 cents. So we're still, you know, working around that level. With the issue that Carol described about the homeowners association, and really the only objection there can be to this is kind of an aesthetic issue in terms of seeing a lot of panels on roofs. But we've got good installers, they're very sensitive to this, and by integrating these into the building design, you know, these do not detract at all from the aesthetics. Here we've got some suburban and some rural applications to this. You know, frankly, I think they're beautiful. It depends on your point of view, it's mostly dealing with aesthetics. But we're working with the homeowners association. There are three or four in Blacksburg that have some language that, and particularly this new state law is going to affect that, but it's something that installers are very sensitive about and we are too. In addition to the roof mount options, there are ground mount systems as well, and this gives you a little more flexibility to, if you have shading on your rooftop, but if you have some land area, and particularly in rural applications, this may be an application as well. So I think that may be our last slide. I wonder if you have any questions for us?
Questions, comments, board members?
Yeah.
Quick question. So you said about 10% of your calls are coming from outside of 24060, outside of Blacksburg. What do you do with those right now?
We're telling them, "Hold on," basically.
Okay. So you're only working within the town of Blacksburg?
Right, 24060, which gets us out there pretty well, because this country's blocking down.
It's all the McCoy area, especially compared to that of the zip code area to the actual town limit, and it's.
Much worse.
Which is actually a lot larger than I thought when it comes out, so yeah.
And the purpose for that, of course, is to keep it contained, to keep prices down for these installers so they're doing work and not driving.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this seems to be kind of the first stage, and then like you were saying, is that dropped?
Yeah, we're like holding on, but so far it's been.
Okay.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I've got two or three questions. One has to do, my wife, somebody from Blacksburg came down and talked to our roofing club in Charlotte.
Oh, that would be nice.
She was really impressed.
Yeah.
I have a couple, three questions. If you are in a position where you've got a roof that's going to need replacing in the next eight or 10 years, that still has to be done, how much trouble is to take those off and put them back on, all the things?
We, if you, if you see our questionnaire online, one of the questions is, "Do you know how old your roof is?" And, you know, because if you're going to replace the roof soon, you might as well do that first. These can be removed and put back on, but it's another labor cost associated with it. I've self-installed three systems myself, and I'm no electrician actually, but I shouldn't say that. But it's not that complicated to do, but still it involves a fair amount of labor. It depends on the roof too, if the roof's, you know, the roof's like this, it becomes a little more complicated.
I also comment on that because I, my, I signed up for the program as well, and my roof is right around 12 years old, which by conventional wisdom is like right at the halfway point of replacement. And I've just been wondering about what to do, and the installer looked at it and he said, "You know, that's one, that's not a very useful roof to sell because, you know, you had a different type of shingle that looks like it's going to last a lot longer." But what they also told me, surprising, is that the solar panels, in many cases, can extend the life of the roof, you know, reduces the UV damage on it, and the snow, because it tends to come off a lot quicker, isn't doing grating on the roof surface. So he said, "I would not at all, even though your roof is 12 years old, recommend a replacement. If you're within, you know, five years of needing a roof replacement, then you should really consider it."
Okay. Next question is, what is the life of the panels?
They're warranted for 25 years, but I think all the studies have shown they last longer than that. They drop off the performance at about 0.7% per year, and so after 25 years, they're down to about 80% of their expected output. So they drop a little bit in output, but they'll continue even beyond the 25 years at that, that kind of, that kind of rate.
Okay.
The other equipment, the inverter, which converts the direct current power from the solar to alternating current to feed the grid, it's warranted generally over 10 to 15 years. So it's a little bit less. And so we think for a long-term system, after 30 years, you probably have to replace the inverter, which.
Couple thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, or, or less than that, but, yeah, 1,200. It's, you know, it says it's 68 cents a watt for the panels. The inverter is right now about 20 cents per watt, so even then.
You said 68 cents per watt?
68 cents per watt is the, is the panel.
Yeah, I had something I heard you said, it's 3.55 for a watt.
Right, that's installed, I'm talking about the panel cost, the, this is a global price, it's like the price of oil globally, you know? So this is the global market, but that's the current global price, and that's what's kind of tracked in terms of how things are trending. But the 3.55 includes the labor, the racking, the, what we call the balance of system costs associated with it beyond the panels.
Another question. Maggie was now speaking with her to us on, and from Blacksburg, she said she had three panels.
We can show you her house?
And.
That's it, right there on the upper left is her house.
Okay. Yeah, I bet you, well enough, she said she had three panels, and the price had gotten down.
There are 10 panels there.
Yes, it looks like it's more than that. She said the, I guess she or I want to stay for a minute.
I think she meant, she probably referring to the size of the system. It's not quite a 3 kilowatt system, it's.
It's 2 kilowatt.
Yeah, anyway, yeah.
And then I believe I got something in the mail the other day that said that, how did that, I forgot how to put it now, but it had something, we kept that on. It went on through, I'll catch it on the way, but. The other thing, just to give you some information in case you're giving this again to somebody, AFCO has come out and said they're not going to raise rates for three years.
Right, after their, right, after their current, 10%.
You had mentioned that in your presentation.
I hope they don't.
Well, okay. And replacing the inverter, what kind of cost is that and how?
20 cents per watt. If it's like a 3 kilowatt system, maybe I can't.
Something, well, I'm not.
Generally, it'd be about $1,200.
And has to be done once during the life of the system.
Right.
And that's all I have. I'm thinking something about putting it on my app screen.
I know, I'm telling you.
One last comment.
Maybe you already bought it.
You brought up AFCO, and we've been meeting with AFCO representatives, they're very interested in this program. In fact, they sent to our meeting 10 representatives from Richmond, their government affairs people, from Lynchburg, from Roanoke, from Columbus, from Charleston, West Virginia, from, you know, and they're, they realize that this is coming, and they want to do the best to prepare themselves.
Sure. And my understanding is that they buy back anything over above what you produce more in the summer or spring and fall than you normally would, and you get something full.
Well, any, any day that you produce more than you're using, it's just wired into your service box, and it will feed all of your needs. But if it exceeds those needs, it finds its way back and runs the meter backwards, basically, and goes into the grid. So this happens really on a daily basis. And if you produce in one month more than you are using, you will kind of get negative bills, but they'll carry that over to the next month so that they will use that up. And they don't want you to produce more than you would use in a year. That's kind of the state rules on this. And so in terms of sizing a system, they'll check your consumption, see how big a system would cover that amount more or less. And, you know, so, you know, it's becoming kind of a well, and kind of institutionalized There's a cap on how much they can accept of 1% of their peak demand, 1%, and kilowatts is peak demand, they are capped at that. But we've only used up in AFCO's entire service area, less than 10% of that 1%, so we can add 10 times the capacity that we have right now without hitting that cap.
Yeah, I got a few bills this year, about 3.54.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Well, on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Carol and John, thank you for the presentation that you.
My pleasure.
Made tonight. That information, thank you. The next order of business is public address. If it's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board, we have five minutes, and please do so at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, we will close our public address session and move on to addendum. Do we have an addendum?
Do you not have any?
Okay, question at this time. It is, I know I sent an email about the opportunity to take pulling place, but having heard from Marty, we're going to leave that for now. I had a question about the budget, because obviously that's coming up right here. What, how does, we don't have to do a budget. So how will what we're doing here be affected by actions that hopefully will come very soon from the state?
Probably just going and answering now, going and responding now, if it's okay with the board members.
Yeah, I think it would be.
My, my question is, are we prepared, or is it a good idea to, to actually move on this at this meeting at this current time?
The concern with the resolution regarding the tax rate, I think if the board is in agreement for the property tax rate for the upcoming year, then I don't think the state budget issue has any bearing on that tonight. The budget itself is simply a planning document. It's not an appropriation. So the board can adopt the budget this evening or adopt the budget at a future meeting. And again, that document is simply a planning document. We normally do the appropriation for the budget at the first meeting in June. That's to fund the budget. At that point in time, if there have been any changes, we can go back and amend the budget that's adopted this evening if you choose to do so. Again, that's simply a planning document, does not appropriate any money, it just allows the county to move forward with plans for the upcoming fiscal year. And I'm looking at Marty and Carol, was there any, Angie and Mark, any of, anything that I left out there? I mean, the key issue tonight is the tax rate due to the timing of the tax tickets and keeping that process moving.
And if, let's say you do approve the budget prior to appropriation, if the number changes for that budget up to 1% of the expanded amount, which I think is 1.7 million.
It is.
So if there's an increase or decrease in the budget in the public area.
That's what I thought.
You have to advertise one, send a date between the airtime and the hearing date, but you can't approve the amendment at that public hearing, after the public.
So if, so if the state adopts a budget and it affects us by more than 1.7 million, up or down, we'd have to, we'd be required to have a public hearing to.
Amend your budget.
To amend the budget, otherwise you can just do it administratively.
Correct.
That's fine, thank you for the clarification. I just want to make sure that everyone here, hopefully people watching, know what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So, have a motion and a second, with the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Charles?
Hi.
Mr. Tuck?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Kean?
Hi.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Next item is whole business. Subject A, resolution setting the real estate tax rate and other property taxes.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, the board did advertise a real estate tax rate of 89 cents per hundred, the other, which is the same as the current real estate tax rate. The other rates related to personal property machinery and tools and merchants' capital, those rates did not change or were not recommended to be changed from the prior year as well. At this point, it's up to the board as to how you want to proceed with that.
Motion? Motion to approve? Yes. Have a motion and a second.
And, and, yeah, what, need to declare what real estate? It's 4.
89.
4, the 89 cents, yeah.
Your motion, 89 cents, and it's your second, okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk, please, call the roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Mr. Kean?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
I'm going to vote aye to put it out there because I realize we don't have enough support for anything else, but I want to make clear for the record that I have serious reservations about the whole process because of what's going on at the state level and the fact that there are going to be some things that are not going to be funded properly, in my opinion.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye, but I would like to take it to what Ms. Biggs has said, but I vote for it.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six aye, one aye.
Subject B, resolution establishing the FY 2014, 2015.
Aye.
Six aye, one aye.
Subject B, resolution establishing the FY 2014-2015 budget.
And I need to, if I can, I need to ask because I realized when I walked in here, I did not bring the sheet with the latest number. So Carol, have you got that for, because it has changed slightly? That's, that's right. Thank you. I do have that, and it's the 171.
Can we send that out?
Is that the 96,000 because of the public?
Yes.
Okay.
The one we were saying, the 96,000 and based on our last discretion, would be one in question, continue to be before the board made it through.
I thought it was. Well, this was, we got that last, last week. This is. Yeah, she, no, she wasn't here, so I'm sorry.
So the number that would be in the blank, based on what we've presented so far, is 171,574,710 dollars. Is that correct? It's 174, I'm sorry. 171.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong.
Okay, 509 what?
The to, yes, the total revenue was 171, 509, 446. The difference is the 96,605. I got it.
Do we need to add anything to that resolution?
Y'all are disagreeing. I'm, I'm going to ask that we wait for just a minute. Yeah, to get the, get the correct number. I want to make sure we've got the right number for the. We got the right number? Y'all have, y'all have two different numbers and I want to make sure we're right. No, he wasn't, he wasn't sure.
I'm watching your face.
Why do you keep changing it?
That was what, that was what Mark just said.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. The number, the number based on the latest. The number that would be in the blank, based on the 89 cent tax rate, is 171,509,446 dollars.
Okay, may, may I ask my question?
Yes.
Do we need to put as part of that res- resolution that this is a planning document based on?
We, we talked about that this morning. It is, I mean, it's understood that when you adopt it.
It doesn't appropriate the money.
All right.
So you don't have to make any statement to the fact that, may or may not.
The statute requires you to adopt the budget. The statute says that if it amends up to 1% of the total expenditure, which in this case was the 171,509.
Okay.
Then you have to amend it.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Okay.
And I will.
I just want to be sure.
And I will reiterate that as well. This is based on the best information we have, uh, from the state, but again, they have not adopted a budget yet. So.
Now, just looking for a motion. Have a motion? And a second? Is it any discussion?
Yeah, I know this isn't the time to talk about specific appropriations, but when we come to, when it comes time to appropriate, I hope that we can put in a couple thousand dollars at least for the Christiansbury Institute. I'd also like to see something that I, I mentioned, um, earlier, perhaps for fund balance, is the $60,000 planning, um, for the planning document for the libraries and for the, um, for the marketing department. And if this $96,000 is freed up, I would think that we could, we should have a little discussion about where that could go. I was thinking that it might be, uh, it might be we're talking about sending that to the schools or something like that, so.
I think this document has 5,000 in it for Christiansbury Institute.
Yes, it already is. I, I confirmed that as well.
Yeah, I think it was 5,000. If you want more, you know, you'd have to.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Any other for, for the discussion? Have a motion and a second? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creese.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bev.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay. Item seven, new business, subject, initiate zoning tax amendment to require special use permit, removal and/or filling of excavation material.
What we're asking with this item is, we've become aware, and I'm going to interrupt myself in the middle. Angie and Mark, thank you so much for your work on the budget. Uh, I was going to do that under my comments, but since you're walking out the door, thank you so much for all your work. We've added this resolution, uh, we've had quite a bit of discussion in recent weeks about, um, fill areas and issues related to, uh, fill sites. We're aware that there may be discussion of several others that may be coming in the county in the months ahead, and this is just to ask for the board to, um, request that the Planning Commission review this item.
Yeah, it's, it's the beginning of the process, starting, uh, a discussion, if you may, on the, on zoning tax amendment to, to possibly, uh, regulate the removal or filling of excavation material. And we're talking about properties where there isn't a development going on, meaning it's not a subdivision, it's not, there's not a construction permit or some sort of issue for buildings or something. It's basically like Craig stated, is a fill. It's just a putting fill in there. Right now, it's regulated by ENS and Stormwater. However, those are all administrative rules, meaning they, they submit their site plan and follow the requirements of the ordinance, uh, they can do it. And so what we're talking about doing is maybe looking at it and giving you, uh, through a special use permit process of zoning ordinance where you can say yea or nay. And the yea or nay would be most likely based on traffic concerns, not enjoying property in that, things of that nature. I mean, and, uh, you know, if, you know, truck, but the biggest impact would be things in creating noise, creating dust. And so th- those are the impacts that we think you should maybe consider looking at prior to these things going in place. And so, in the English, my, uh, my law is required to start the process in zoning ordinance, so they'll, or the public hearing, uh, June, maybe? Maybe, man. Uh, we're, we're in the process of thinking about soon drafting a, uh, proposed ordinance. So the planning commission, they'll, they'll, uh, study it, look at it, and make a recommendation to you, and then you'll have the ultimate decision, probably in June.
Other questions?
We've had one impact that the neighbor believes had been impacted to some extent to this type of operation.
Oh, questions? Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creese.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bev.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Subject B, appointment, planning director and subdivision agent. Uh, appointment, planning director and subdivision agents. Just pick it up.
Yeah, I will, Mr. Chair. Um, traditionally, our planning director has served as, um, the planning director and the subdivision agent, uh, for the county. Uh, with Steve Sandy leaving a couple of months ago, I have, uh, served in a role of subdivision agent, and I can continue to do that as basically a substitute, uh, when Karen's not here. But Karen, I'd like for you to stand up. I think everybody knows Karen, I'm not sure, but Karen Drake, uh, has been with us for, it's been a month yet?
One month.
Well, it has been, it time flies. She's been with us for a month, uh, has really dived in and got involved in quite a bit of, uh, issues and challenges already, but we're really glad, Karen, that you're on board and, um, I'll be more than happy to see this approved so I can quit signing all those flats.
I could add, in the resolution, it says they give a coin for it. I mean, you're actually really happy with that. What it should say, it must be a typo, it should say, you're appointing Karen Drake to be the main director.
It is, yeah.
Subdivision agent.
That's a, that's why I stumbled when I looked at that. I thought, okay, I thought I did that already.
I'm on the tunes and I'm like, man.
You're only appointing her in her role.
As planning director, as subdivision, thank you.
She's a private company.
All right.
She has no authority to be the subdivision.
I didn't catch that either till I just tried to read it. Yes.
So might have that change be reflected in the, in the resolution.
Okay, need a motion?
Some move.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second with the relevant changes.
Yeah, with the changes. Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bev.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creese.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Subject C, appointment, alcohol safety action program, reappoint Mary Pettit.
Some move.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict. I currently am the chairman of the VACUP board, and so I don't believe it would be appropriate for me to be picking additional board members, so I'm going to refrain from voting on that.
Okay. A second. Have a motion and a second? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bev.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Same.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creese.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Seven aye, one aye.
Well, it's time for the county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
County administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple items briefly this evening. First, um, road viewer's road tour. Uh, if you recall, we took a, a road trip last year. I think everybody made it, the supervisor, Tuck, and, uh, I bounced you guys around several roads in the county to show you some, um, issues and whatnot. I wanted to make this available as an opportunity again this year. We will be having our six-year, uh, road plan public hearing, uh, coming up in the next month. Uh, however, I did talk with Dave Clark at VDOT. Really, the issues that we're going to be talking about in that six-year plan are basically the same issues we talked about last year for the most part. Uh, there's not a requirement that we take a road tour, um, but I wanted to make that offer if anybody wanted to go riding around in a van. Whatever you're offering. I, I tried to sound encouraging, but we could, we could, we could think about it.
It's hard for me to go during the day.
Yeah, we could think about it.
But I, I'd be happy to go on a road tour as, as long as either I get to drive or ride in the front seat because I, I have motion sickness issues, so I don't want to, man, I'll, I'll, in the van, I don't want to be in the back.
He and I will have to fight it out.
Well, I'll drive, there you are.
Oh, you drive.
I'll be glad to call the board. I just wanted to mention that as an opportunity, uh, again, and I'll say it politely, that, uh, there's nothing new to add to what we saw last year. Um, we've only, I've been here almost five years, we've done two, so it's y'all's call as to whether we do one again or not.
We seem to always know the same roads, and that's because those are the roads.
Those that still are on the list.
Uh, I don't know anything else that everybody has pretty much seen.
Well, I know, I know Supervisor King wasn't with us last year, but you're very, you're already familiar with some of the, the opportunities we'll be talking about next month, so. We'll, we'll send a note out, but I just wanted to mention that, no, we don't have to have a consensus this evening. The other.
If, if, if we don't though, uh, we don't need to tell VDOT until the day of them. That way everybody's road will get paid.
That's a good, that's, okay, that's a good call. But the other item I wanted to mention to you this evening was an up, is an update on the VT polling place, uh, precinct. There is an attachment in your items, uh, this evening, tab E from Dr. Wilson at Virginia Tech. They've reviewed the information and, uh, with a few, uh, concerns, but, but they're overall very supportive of moving forward with a, a opportunity to set up polling precincts in the Squires Student Center. Uh, I thought that, um, he referenced a, a letter from the registrar and I thought it was attached in that same tab E, but it wasn't, so I'll pass that along. This is basically what, um, Dr. Wilson and the staff was responding to. I did get an email from the registrar on Friday that just basically says that the reg, the, uh, electoral board will be reviewing Dr. Wilson's letter and will, um, let us know if they have any other questions or concerns. Marty, I guess my question would be, next steps in this process? Should the board want to continue to move this forward with the ordinance?
Uh, correct, and, and what I think would be helpful is some type of consensus in the board to go ahead and have staff draft the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance, what the ordinance would do is, um, change, uh, the E3 precinct. Um, it would create a new F3 precinct, and both those precincts would have Squires as their polling place. Um, so the E3 voting location would change as well. And that would also bring, um, some changes, um, in, uh, in some of the other precincts that abound in that area. Uh, and so you have to do those changes by ordinance. Um, and so we'd ask that you, uh, give us instructions to do that, and then we'll bring it back at, at your next meeting in the end of this month and, uh, ask, uh, if everyone's okay with, uh, the way it's drafted, and we'll ask that you schedule a public hearing, which would then be held at the May, last May meeting, and then the board can adopt it anytime after that.
And just to add to that as well, Supervisor Gabriel and I were talking beforehand, we'll let the, we'll let the student government folks be aware of the activities and invite them to a meeting as well because candidly, um, their input and, um, persistence with the administration of VTs really is what kept this thing moving along, so.
Um, I, I just read over, you know, the registrar's letter, you know, about the concerns, and, and one of the things is we're hoping for better turnout.
Right.
And, and I look at the, the, uh, what Virginia Tech is saying, and it said, basically, we will also reserve the right to consider other locations for future elections, including not limited to the old Minnebar Room, First Forest Squires Student Center and the like. And then I, I see what Randy's concerns are, that we'll have a big turnout. We're going to have two precincts there, trying to keep them divided. I, I'm concerned that if we do get a big turnout, the whole reason we're doing this is to try to make it easier for folks to vote and not more difficult. So I, I, I am somewhat concerned about the potential when we leave it so open-ended about, you know, including but not limited to. Um, and then the other aspect of things I'm somewhat concerned about is, it says that there additionally were supported a free speech right, but then if they're going to say that they're going to discourage individuals or, or they're not going to allow them on the polling alumni mall. And I, I don't know how, if, if it's open to the public, I'm certain, not certain how you infringe on First Amendment rights. And, and that's somewhat concerning to me that I would be a part of, I, I'm somehow trying to limit people's First Amendment rights. And so those are my concerns in regard, I, I get that, hey, you're going, we're going to tell everybody in advance, you got to do a training, we don't want to disturb or, or put holes in their internet systems or, or anything along those lines, but limiting people's free speech rights and then also the whole point of this is to make it easier for folks to vote. I'm somewhat concerned about the letter because it's so open-ended, aware of that voting precinct. And we want it to be consistent. We want everybody to know, this is where I go to vote every year and where people can tell them this is where we're going to vote, not, hey, one time you're upstairs, next time you're downstairs. And so if, if there's ways that we could communicate with Virginia Tech to try to get it nailed down, maybe for a, a period of time to say, utilize this, is that possible?
Well, my, my suggestions to that is, as I said, I believe the, uh, electoral board's meeting this Wednesday to discuss Dr. Wilson's letter. So I think what we'll, what we'll know in the days ahead are what are the electoral board's concerns. If the board wants us to move forward with an ordinance, we have to have, as Marty said, we have to have a public hearing on that ordinance, and I'm sure that during the public hearing, any of, any and all of those issues can be discussed.
Well, the ordinance is going to say Squires building and have the address, because if you think about all our other polling places, we don't have to say where it's going to be. We're in most of the schools, we don't say in the Janavian, the KISS, we just say it's in KISS.
That's KISS, so.
And so we're just going to be identifying the Squires. You know, the other thing is, we, I don't think we're involved in restricting anybody's constitutional rights, I mean, we're not, when we set up the polling place, another thing we're required to do until the registrar, is he's required to keep people out of that certain area, particularly the.
Forty feet, forty feet.
Forty feet.
Where people can't come in and use their free speech rights and try to make you vote for someone or not vote for somebody. So that's the one thing we'll be restricting, we being county or really.
But if we move this here, and I guess the way I'm looking at it, we're saying this is okay to put it to this site. And by the way, a lot of people are going to enter into alumni, I mean, there's going to be the doors up there, they're going to be walking down through there. And so to say, no, they're not allowed, these seem, going beyond the state offices, you can't be closer than the forty feet. That bothers me to me as far as that aspect of things. You know, I think everybody here's worked the polls at some point in time handing out literature and doing those things to not stand the forty foot. But you've got many entrances to the building, there's the upper quad is going to be one of the biggest areas that's going to, or one of the areas that's going to be served by this, not the biggest, but it's going to be. And they're going to be walking across Alumni Mall, right into Squires, but the normal, they're not going to say, I'm going to walk around the building to come in the lower side. I just don't see that, and that, and so that's where, I understand we're not saying to go, but by putting it here, we're allowing tech to limit that.
But that, that's already limited by the property owners that are there. I mean, the polling locations that I've visited, which have been several schools in the community center in Blacksburg, is that there are multiple entrances to those schools, which until now have been open, but now they're all locked. But until that time, people can come into the building at any time and use those as they, as they would. And the people who are outside passing literature are restricted to one certain area near the, where the main entrance is, which tech is defining as this one state.
But I don't think that you are typically, Belmont, uh.
Do you have a lot of people around the back of Belmont?
They have to walk around, they have to come into the front of the building, that there's no other entrance. Christiansburg Rec Center, and I'm just thinking of the ones I've worked recently. If you're coming into the main building, you're not going in because all the other doors are firing. Church of the Brethren, same thing, coming in through that main door. But with Squires, obviously they're going to have it open, it's a public building. And you're talking about thousands of voters walking through one side of the building, because nobody's going to have an opportunity to hand them a piece of literature, nobody's going to have the opportunity to have their signs out front. And they're going to be coming in that door, and so. Wait a minute, but so, that's a First Amendment right to be able to.
It's not your First Amendment right to be able to interact with every single voter that comes into a polling place. Not your, it's your, it's your, the ability to have an opportunity to speak to that voter. And if that voter walks around you, it's the same as if, if they go to another entrance, it's the same as if them saying, please don't bother me, which I have said numerous times. You know, and so I don't think that we're infringing our rights simply by being allowed to, or someone being allowed to be on.
We're saying you cannot go to another main entrance, and you cannot hand out the literature. That's what we're saying by adopting the poll. No. Yeah, that's what they're saying, you can't hand out literature.
They're saying that people who aren't Virginia Tech faculty or staff or students can't be on state property, interacting with them in certain ways.
Well, I was looking at this, and when I read this, and that's where my concern was, that says additional resorted, we have policies in place which govern the placement of advertising, solicitation, similar activity on campus to minimize disruption to the learning environment, maintain safe, inclusive, and welcoming atmosphere. Therefore, posters, party officials, and literature distribution will only be allowed to congregate and occur on College Avenue and not Alumni Mall. So it is specifically saying you can't do those things.
And Virginia Tech's been doing that for a million years.
If you go, if you try to go on Virginia Tech campus. No, but this is not. This is voting, this is a fundamental right, a constitutional right.
Okay, I would infer that you could try to go on the tech campus and try to pass out any literature anywhere on campus. You will be hustled off there. And the state, to my understanding, has not seen fit to nullify Virginia Tech's ability to do that. And so why is this any different?
Because it's an election. And this is an election, this is, this is the, the state thing of democracy is to be able to solicit those votes, and this is saying you can't do it. To the main interest of one building, and you know that I'm right on that, the students aren't going to walk all the way around College Avenue.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a good deal. It's the same way it's going in the side doors, Blacksburg Community Center, which I have seen numerous people do on numerous occasions.
You've got to like to go over to the Blacksburg side of that within forty feet and say, dear Mr. Gabriel, are you interested in a sample ballot? And that person doesn't have to do that, but that is, my constitutional right to be going over the polling places are supposed to be open to the public, not closed to the public.
Well, then, then you can sue to overturn.
But no, I'm on the board, and so I get to make that decision about whether we go to this forum or whatever, seven decisions. You get to make that decision. And I guess that is a big concern to me, that we would infringe on people's rights.
We're not infringing on people's rights. Everything is not this big constitutional issue. This isn't a constitutional issue. I know that, I know, I know, I understand like what you're trying to say, I think that your claims are species.
Well, I mean, that's, that's fine. Well, I look at it, and I guess I think being able to talk to voters is one of the most important things. You get to make that talk, and next time don't work the polls. Just say you're saying you can't do that.
Correct. You are absolutely right, it is not my constitutional right to work at a polling location.
Not true.
Whoa. Really, you can make people from working there. I didn't say that it was, I didn't say it was anybody, not anybody's constitutional right.
That's what we're saying here.
I think we probably could take a vote and bring this thing to a close.
What I think that we need to do is you need to send off and ask for a ruling by the.
Attorney General.
And again.
And that'll be quicker than what we can get through this.
And I think, and I think what's going to happen when there is a public hearing is I think there are going to be concerns that are expressed, but.
Well.
And that was for information tonight, I didn't realize we were going to delve deeply into it, but.
Are there not walkways from Alumni Mall down toward the other part of Squires, so we can get in? Oh, good grief. I do this all the time, pardon me. Um, are there walkways, it's been a long time since I've been around.
Yes.
And they can just walk from Alumni Mall right down toward the, that's the way I understood it to be, so.
I think you gave, he was giving us an update, you didn't. It was an update, Craig was giving us an update. Just a couple more items under administrator's report and.
Uh-oh.
These are easy, I think. I do want to remind everyone of the joint meeting with the town of Blacksburg, and that is on April 29th. I know last week at the meeting, it was brought up that that's the same night as the school board budget public hearing. However, and consulting the town, they had already published that date and did not want to change it at this point. So we agreed that we would meet, it's Tuesday, April 29th, at seven o'clock, and they have requested that we meet at Blacksburg Transit. So we'll be getting that information out. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the web architect position that we advertised for, that's going to be working with the county and the schools, her lady's name is Marie Stewart. She started today, was her first day, she has eighteen years of experience. She was the web architect with Cornell University from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and ten, and has worked with the Roanoke Times for the last four years as a senior web developer. So we were very pleased with being able to bring her on board, and I think she's going to be able to assist both the county and the schools considerably in the work that we're doing with our social media presence. Last but not least, just hope everyone has a good Easter weekend this weekend, and that's it.
Supervisor Crete?
I've got one thing, I want to mention something about this to a couple of you before the meeting started. Last week when they were having all the traffic down our way, there, bus, bus stop that, to let a child off, and under red lights on.
Creep about that.
The bus driver just happened to have enough sense to look in his mirror and see a trailer truck come in, and he stopped the little one to get in. The truck passed him on the right hand side, which would have killed them both if they'd went up, but they didn't. The grandmother of these kids has called me a couple of times, and, you know, she, she was sitting there in her car waiting to take them home. And the following day, we had, I say we, somebody within the county government, Sheriff's Department or somewhere, had lights, flashing lights put up, saying that there was bus stops within the next five miles when it was breaking. Well, she called me back again today, she said, you know, the speed limit hasn't changed, and there's still more trucks coming down this way than used to be, because they've gotten used to it. But we put the speed limit back up to sixty miles per hour and taken away the lights. She said, now tell me what sense that makes. I said, well, it can't, because it don't make a lot. So, I'd like to question somebody to find out that, exactly what went on. I also understand that they did not give the gentleman, that was in the truck, any kind of a ticket of any kind, because there was no wreck, but if you pass a black and white, red, black and white on the bus, you just.
You're supposed to go to court. Right.
So I'd like to make sure that, that I don't know, I just know what this lady.
We'll get information.
She said, she was tore up, she went back up in the hour and the top of kids, and was certainly glad to get them back. That was, you know, that was, that was something that we'll never go into the statistics when VDOT is wanting to do this, this, and this for both. You know, they said, oh, we never had a wreck, no, but you just darned not kill two kids. Or maybe a whole busload, or whatever it could be. That's what I, just like I said, never mentioned that. It's a lot to talk to them.
Supervisor Perkins?
Where would we, I'm going to follow up on that just a moment. Where would we put a sign that says, no trucks allowed?
Can't do that.
Yeah.
They play.
I know that, I know that, um, signs that say.
They can, they can put up signs.
Additional warnings.
Warning signs.
Saying that there are bus stops such as what they did. But I'm, and I'm even wondering if the speed limit down there needs to go back to fifty-five mile an hour from the bottom of that, down to, we only talk about a three, four mile area that, for whatever reason, won't stick.
But they don't go that fast regardless.
I'll be glad.
No, they don't, they go back seven.
On that flat stretch.
They go back seven.
That's right, but I mean, they're going to go regardless of what, with the speed limit, because I was going down there last week, took me two hours to get from Blacksburg to where I was going in Roanoke. And there were many, many tractor trailers coming through that day, and they were not slowing down, they were moving on. And I guess if I'd been that grandmother, I'd wanted to catch that guy. But you can't, I mean, it was, and then when we got down to where it went into one lane outside of Salem, the tractor trailers were right there, and they weren't going much in.
And she talked to me for thirty, about forty minutes today, so.
I understand, but it, that scares me, otherwise I really don't have any report.
Supervisor Biggs?
Just to follow up on that, I heard that during this time, the school buses had a hard time getting out from the schools to get onto four sixty, and I also heard that some of the school buses were delayed delivering the kids to school. And my question was, I know like Neil and Tommy were working on, you know, that whole aspect of, you know, and I just wondered if we have another event like that, what happens, do we do extra patrolling, or is there no one to like, I guess it's hard to stop traffic to let a school bus out, but if you have that kind of traffic, they said nobody would let certain buses out onto the road. And so I guess my question is, if that happens again, should we plan for it, if it's during school time?
Well, I, the last part of that, I know we planned for it, I'm looking at Robbie in the back. Do you want to say anything to that, Robbie, because I know we had quite a bit of discussion about how to handle the detour and.
We found out about the detour on Thursday, that it was going to start sunning. Surprise, I put together the plan, when we went to the meeting with VDOT, they hadn't even thought about the school buses.
Of course.
And I don't know where you guys heard complaints, but we put together a plan, and we had the school resource officers, another deputy down there that did stop traffic.
Good.
To let the buses out. Only problem is, delivered then, on Monday, we had problems, we planned for the evenings, but then we had problems in the morning on that Monday morning, so weather was a factor that Monday also. So then we put together plans for the Monday morning, I mean, for the mornings, delivery also. I couldn't hear you back from your experience, your incident, the tractor trailer, the school bus, we checked on that, we had no report of that incident until the next day when Rebecca Lumal contacted VDOT. Immediately, me and Captain Wright, we got in touch with VDOT, we got message boards, and we put extra officers in the area the rest of the week.
Good.
Until Friday, to try to slow stuff down.
It sounds like to me that you guys were on top of everything, so that, I just, that's why I wanted to ask, because you know how things get said and.
At certain times during the day, we had, we had four to six officers down there trying to handle the problems. And you can plan as much as you want to, but everything don't go exactly the way you planned.
I've seen, you know, the, haven't had any problems or anybody calling about getting out of the schools and stuff. I've seen the deputies down there letting them out, with this other thing with, with this truck.
Yeah, VDOT contacted me the next day, well, we sent an email from Rebecca Lumal to VDOT. And then we, I contacted VDOT, we got the extra message boards, and we put extra officers down there to try to do the best we could.
Did we get anything to find out from this, from the school, or this truck, or?
No, sure, there was not enough information to.
Oh, shoot.
What information would you need other than?
Like license.
Tag.
Tag number, anything.
Yep, that's available.
It is?
It is, according to slave, what she told me.
Okay, well, when did you get that?
She said the tag's pulled over on below there, and the bus, school bus and the truck stayed there, she escorted her twenty to thirty minutes. I don't know, I just.
I'll get that from you after Maple City, will I?
Well, I don't have the list, but I've got it on.
Well, that, that detour, I agree with what Captain Hall said about the best-laid plans, because even on Friday morning, once the detour was over, we still had a truck plow into the back of another one on eighty-one, simply because they weren't paying attention. It's always a challenge, and I will commend Robbie and the sheriff's folks, they do get out there and force and.
I think they did a great job, I mean, nobody can anticipate the truck coming down there.
Well, even the first day, we did pretty good in doing bottlenecked Dixie Caverns.
Absolutely.
And then they bottlenecked Dixie Caverns and backed it up, and it wasn't nothing to do. Originally, they were hoping to keep all the trucks on eighty-one and just divert the cars off, but.
People get rid.
With message boards, you can't control that, and then people, people realized they had a go-to shop, get there faster on eighty-one, then the Jordan vehicles, local vehicles would stay on eighty-one, so.
Well, I know going down there, that, that traffic backed up from Dixie Caverns all the way up to Elston School. I mean, when I.
Yeah, but as bad as theirs was, we had ten, twelve miles of it where they were going, and most of them kept up pretty good. were going, and most of them kept up pretty good. One coming back, going, going south from Dixie Caverns, and I got off on five eighty-one in Roanoke, and you can still see them.
Well, there was construction also going on in Salem and in Roanoke County, which complicated things on this construction project, so.
It's been a mess all the way around. And nobody, I would like to do, to send to a couple, I'd like to can put lights that they could turn on every day as according to the schedule of, of the buses coming off that mountain, if they gonna leave it at sixty. They, they should have some kind of a light to let trucks know, uh, whether they're running, uh, a hundred trucks an hour, or whether they're running five trucks an hour, or two trucks an hour. That is a dangerous road running sixty, sixty-five mile an hour, and coming around curbs.
Hopper Hollow's a bad spot also, anyway, because you sight distance up there around the curve.
Coming around, from Rockwood up there.
I say that's what scares me.
It's not, it's not funny, and, uh, this lady today was, she was bitter about it at, at her ends, so I couldn't-
Yeah, a lot of planes are late at the state level, and then it's just passed down, and you gotta do the best you can for what you got to do with it, so.
Not that right.
Thank you, Robbie.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Okay. All right, then, um, I just wanted to tell you all that I, uh, did go to Richmond on Wednesday, April second, because now the governor's transition committee is called the governor's advisory committee on local government. And so we met with the governor, and we told him that was really important to us as localities to get the budget through. Of course, he already knew that. And so, um, but we did stress that. And, um, the only piece, the piece of good news I brought from it was, like, if it were to happen, and his proposal went through for the teacher salary, um, money, that if that came to localities, they would actually be able to use it the way they wanted to, even though it was for the SOQ teachers. So it wasn't, wouldn't be like a thing where you have to match the money to give it to everyone, they could, like, spread it out. And, uh, while I was there, I talked to Zuzette Denzilow, and she's the one that's our contact person for that committee, and I explained about the, um, parking ride. And I followed up, she said to send her the information, so I did follow up and send her the information. I haven't heard back yet, but I wanted to let you guys know that. And the exciting news is that the Gardwell went on in Brush Mountain, um, April first, on April Fool's. And, um, my constituent immediately called me up, and he was so excited about it, and he said, how did you get that done? I said, well, you know, we just kept asking to get it done, and it finally got done, so we, we were excited about that. And then I wanted to mention that we had our Virginia's First Authority meetings the other day, on Wednesday, last week, right?
It was last one.
It seems like a year ago. But anyway, we did have it, we have, um, these meetings, are scheduled twice a year. And during that time, uh, we talked about Mr. Morgan is, uh, he's been sort of having the duties of being the director of the Virginia's First Authority, and he will be leaving in August, and so there has to be someone to take over. So there are three different options that, or two options and a suggestion from Pulaski County. So instead of deciding at that meeting what we were gonna do, the Commerce Park Executive Committee and the Virginia's First Executive Committee will be getting together to review, um, the different proposals. One proposal came from the New River Valley Alliance, one from the New River, uh, Planning District Commission, and then a suggestion from Pulaski County. So we'll get together sometime and, and review that. And, um, that's probably what you need to know about that, because we will be having a changeover there. Um, and let me see, what was the other thing? Oh, this is, this is just something I've been observing in the newspapers. Um, I thought it was sort of unique. You know, like, when the health department goes out and they inspect restaurants and cafeteries and stuff? I've noticed that when they go to the schools, the schools get a clean bill. I was really impressed that, you know, because they just pop in there, you don't know when they're coming. And I just think that speaks volumes to the people that work in our public school system, in the kitchens, in the elementary, in the middle and high schools, that they, you know, keep everything the way it's supposed to be, because they're working with an awful lot of amount of food, under a lot of pressure, in a, in a short period of time, as far as serving goes, and then just preparation. So, you know, I just thought we ought to, you know, if you see someone that works in one of those, in one of those facilities, compliment them, because they come away with a clean bill. And that's it.
Mr. Tuck?
Couple of things. Uh, first, I've been, some of the folks that know me, my dog passed away several years ago, several months ago. Uh, it's one that I had adopted from our, our local animal shelter. And, uh, I'm in the process of going out there and looking at the animal shelter and, and looking for a new dog. Um, one, they're, they're full up, uh, a lot of dogs waiting to be adopted, and I'm kinda working through, uh, which dog was right for my family. Uh, but it, it's clear, and one of the things that someone asked me is that, they came up to me and said, uh, we hear you're opposed to, to building a new animal shelter. And I wanted to make it clear, I'm not opposed to, uh, building a new animal shelter, but I, I do wanna know and understand the cost of it, and, and try to, to look at what options we have. As we progress through this, one of the things, I know that we had a group of ladies come before us about, um, that rather than sheltering cats, that we need to be neutering, I think it's trap neutering release. I'd like to hear, because I haven't been here for all the debates and all of that, I'd like to hear from someone else who maybe say, here's a better way to do things, uh, to help me have a better decision when we're coming forward and looking about the housing of cats, which we don't currently do. Um, so, as, as we're progressing towards building the new animal shelter, and I, I think that's gonna be sooner rather than later, that's one of the things that I would like to, to hear about. Um, also, and going back, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but, um, something that, as far as making different arguments about First Amendment rights, y'all probably don't know that one of the things I did was represent someone pro bono, in regards to being able to wear stickers into, in your t-shirts, that might have a political campaign to change that law, because I believe that, in looking at that, um, that was wrong. And, and making people take those things off, they weren't designed to intimidate, which was the original act of the Voting Rights Act. So I put my mouth and, and, and money in my time, uh, where I believed in the First Amendment. Uh, and looking at this, that is an important issue for me. I, I, I promised I would not practice vote for government law, and, and obviously that, if this board made the decision to, to do something along these lines, I obviously could not represent someone against the board. But this is something that I would take very seriously, and I think that we need to seriously look at before we move forward on that aspect of things, and try to work with tech to see if we can get that done.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabriel?
Um, just a couple of quick things. Um, I attended my first, um, meeting of the Tourism Advisory Board, um, at the end of last month, March. Um, and I would encourage you to mark your calendars for October twenty fourteen, because that will be to be the Virginia Science Festival, um, in conjunction with, um, the Science Museum of West Virginia in Roanoke, and Virginia Tech, and some other locations around the county. Um, should be a fantastic, supposed to be the, be the first science festival in all of Virginia, and it'll be hosted here, some really interesting things coming up. Um, they are looking for, uh, Michael Hemphill, who's now the Outreach Director at, at the museum, is looking for, for help and, and ideas for events and things like that. So I would hope that we would kinda keep that in mind and offer any help that we might be able to, uh, going forward. I'm sure we'll hear more about that as, as the time approaches. Um, also, I've been attending the Economic Development Commission meetings. Um, Rob Carey, VDOT gave, just gave an update on kind of existing, um, ongoing issues. Um, nothing terribly different than what he's told us, or what VDOT has been doing otherwise, so there's nothing really to report there. Um, and that's about it.
Mr. King, I just have one thing. I'd like for, uh, Craig, the, the staff and all how much I appreciate them working on the budget, and I know they work long hours, and I know they probably put most of it home with them, worrying here and there. And, uh, tell how much I do appreciate what they do for taxpayers here in Roanoke County.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor King.
And it's down to me, and I'll say, uh, ditto what Mr. King said about, about our staff. I think that we have some exceptional staff, and, uh, since I've been here on the board, I've found them to be very knowledgeable, uh, very easy to work with. Anytime you want information, they usually give you a little bit more than you really need, and I really like that, you know? So, thank you, Marty, Carl, Vicki, and Craig. Uh, I mean, the, uh, all the time, we don't say thank you, but we're saying thank you now. And the times that we fail to say thank you, we, we thought about thanking you anyway, we just didn't go around to it. As far as I'm concerned, this meeting's a change.
Thank you. Thank you very much.